approach you with us today. Who's going to give us an update on the Hampton Roads CDC that she'd like to discuss and provide information to the council. I believe that about a month ago, Councilman Riddick had a question or two about the H-Ruck bills. And so what we're going to do is Kristen Lentz is having a presentation for you tonight. And I believe she's given you even an example of the bill. And then there are a number of ordinances that are coming up tonight that we thought it may be helpful if there was any discussion the council needed prior to the formal agenda. And then we also have listed a closed session for legal matters. So, Mr. Vice Mayor, I'm not sure if you'd like to let Dr. DeCrocey go first or go right into the closed session, but that's what we are lining up.
We'll just let Dr. DeCrocey go first.
Go ahead.
Yes.
That was great. Well, first of all, thank you for letting me present before your closed session. And secondly, let me say it's nice to be here.
We're going to take a deep dive.
Oh, I have to be here. No.
If it makes you feel more important to stand behind the podium.
No, I'm Welby Ann. Well, again, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I come before you as president and CEO of the Hampton Roads Community Foundation. I think the last time I was before you, I was here as president of TCC. As you may know, I have since retired from that post and joined the foundation as its new chief executive officer just about a year ago, March 1st. I must tell you, my first day at the foundation, the very first meeting, 7:30 in the morning, was related to the Park Place Collaborative Initiative. So this was my first introduction, if you will, to some of what we're going to talk with you about today. And I must say, I think it's pretty exciting stuff. The essence of it is community development. In many ways, I'm preaching to the choir. You all, this city, have been engaged in community development long before it was a cool thing to be engaged in. What is it? It's a process, basically, that seeks to improve low and moderate income neighborhoods for the benefit of, under the direction of, the residents of that neighborhood. What's the how? How does it go about that? What is it looking to do? Essentially, two basic components. One, it strives to be sustainable, socially just, and comprehensive. And it encompasses a wide, wide variety of activities, like neighborhood planning, like affordable housing, like commercial real estate development, physical revitalization, and the like. Now, central to it all is partnership. And in many ways, partnership is its middle name. Partnership between a city and its residents. Partnership between a city, its residents, and countless other players who have a stake in the outcome. In many ways, this city has been a model for community development, particularly through some of the work of Norfolk redevelopment and Housing Authority. Something I learned, which I didn't know, though I was familiar with the work of NRHA, is that Norfolk is one of a handful of cities that actually has a housing authority that also does redevelopment. I didn't know that. I should have known that, however, because NRHA was instrumental in the development of what is today TCC's Norfolk campus. So you could say I've seen firsthand the work of NRHA. So, why am I here? I'm here to introduce another player to the process. Here's what I've learned. Here's what we at the foundation have learned. That the literature, no matter what you read about community development, no matter how good it's been, or how successful cities have been with it, the ones that have been particularly high-performing about it view a community development corporation, what is called CDC, as a critical player. And there are all kinds of examples of high-performing precedents across the country, just to name a few. San Francisco, established 1983, called Bridge Housing. Philadelphia, reinvestment fund, established 1985. Durham, North Carolina, Self-Health Credit Union, established 1980. Baltimore, Healthy Neighborhoods, established 1990. With all of these, the emphasis or the focus is on resident leadership development, real estate development, homeownership development, commercial development, without, I might add, many of the limitations and the delimitations that often come with public authorities. So in other words, a CDC is not an authority by another name. It is, in fact, a complement, can be, a powerful complement to what an authority does. So for Norfolk, a CDC could be another tool in the toolbox of community development, plainly and simply. So, what we are proposing, the Hampton Roads Community Foundation is proposing, is the establishment, launch, of a regionally chartered CDC that would start in Norfolk, specifically building on the good work to date in the Park Place neighborhood, plainly and simply. Quick history lesson. You go back to 2008, and all of this predates me. Park Place residents themselves started to seek help with planning and strategy. In other words, they were looking to claim their own destiny, their own future, chart their own course. By 2010, the city commissioned what was called a community engagement process in Park Place and the surrounding ODU neighborhoods. By 2011, that process, called the Visioning and Engagement Project, was completed. And it had in it recommendations like focus dollars and other resources near the Y, and mainly on the strong blocks in Park Place. Blend all the work with an intense focus on resident leadership and capacity building. And create a community development entity to implement the strategy. By 2012, the Hampton Roads Community Foundation, what I'm affiliated with, and the Landmark Foundation, pulled some resources to convene the multiple partners who work on some of these projects' results. And some of the partners, the Y, ODU, NRHA, Norfolk Police, the residents themselves, and then a consultant that the two foundations paid for. And I must say, walking into this, I was so impressed with the results on what this group had coalesced, formed to do in partnership for the good of this neighborhood, like community policing, like intense code enforcement and compliance, like intense zero tolerance for not playing by the rules as they were established. In effect, what the residents did is set their own standards for appearance of that property and worked to build community within the context of all of that. So, building on that, what we envisioned as a next step is, let's launch a community development corporation. Let's launch a CDC. Now, that doesn't mean it would be called a CDC. There would be some really attractive, appropriate name for it that would be worked out in the course of it, but it would be, in effect, a CDC. Both the Hampton Roads Community Foundation and the Landmark Foundation are prepared to make substantial financial commitments to get this thing moving. Specifically, both boards have committed $100,000 each for each year for five years, contingent upon measurable progress defined via performance outcomes and metrics. In other words, they would want to see the progress being made in each of those successive years. And they would, and all of that would go toward funding to include, the two foundations would pay for the consultant that the city has used before, as well as help to fund the base operating, the most expensive cost of which would be the hiring of an executive director. But, that in and of itself won't get this thing launched. The city has to be a key partner. The research shows that over and over and over again. And when you look at the areas where there's been success, you see that over and over again. So what we have asked the city for is, in effect, to match us in a way, with the city putting in $100,000 a year toward operating for, we hope, five years. And then another $150,000 a year for five years for the real estate investment piece to begin to launch that. Of course, there would as well need to be additional investment from the private sector in any number of forms, both to include raw investment as well as lending investment. The initial work would be focused on this. Acquisition and development of key properties in Park Place. Stabilizing the neighborhood markets around Old Dominion and the Y. And in effect, protecting and preserving and ensuring that that initial investment in the Y realizes what it's supposed to realize. And then ultimately, building a stable market for working and middle-income families to live and work in Park Place and beyond. All of this, of course, in partnership with the residents, with Norfolk redevelopment and Housing Authority, and with the private sector. The possibility here, the potential here, is to develop then a model that could be replicated to other parts of the city and beyond. And what I think is one of the most promising things is this. There are already strong, proven business leaders ready to engage as board members, a critical piece to this whole thing. Individuals like Vince Mistraco, Andrew Fine, Rusty Fridell, Louis Ryan, Dick Barry, and of course others. There would also, of course, be slots in the board piece of this for resident leaders and the city as well, and other investors who might come in along the way. So I've been asked to be short and pithy. I hope I've met the bill, Councilwoman.
Great job.
She knows me from my past life. And she made a point to call me yesterday and say, Debbie, you gotta be short. Short, Debbie, short. Said it several times over. I hope I've delivered on that. I must tell you, I'm very excited about this. I think this is an opportunity for the city and her people to move in a direction that it's very difficult to move right now without that private sector engagement. And that's what you get off this, that private sector engagement. When I was at TCC, I was fond of quoting a past colleague of yours, Mason Andrews, who kept reminding me early on in my tenure as TCC's president to turn and look to Robert Vernon, who is credited with the conceptualization of the Chicago Metropolis, who said something to this effect, and I paraphrase, "Make no small plans. There's nothing in them to stir your blood, and rarely if ever do they get implemented. Make only big plans. Aim high and hope and work and fashion a plan the likes of which is so compelling that those who follow you will feel obliged to see it through." Members of council, to me, this is the stuff of that kind of big planning. And we have an opportunity to take our city and our people in a direction that heretofore we have not been able to do because of this additional tool in our toolbox.
Have the boundaries been identified?
Yes, and the property itself has not been identified, but the boundaries of what would be looked at as development piece, yes, are.
And that's Park Place, right?
Yes, oh, yes.
This is the surrounding area around the Y.
Yeah, because, okay, but we used to have, there was a Park Place Community Development Corporation under Mason Andrews. It was on 35th Street. That's where the office was, in the 700 block of West 35th Street. I guess that went away.
Yeah.
And is your organization eligible for community block level grant funds? Which is a grant that we get from HUD each year. And organizations with purposes like yours put in applications for funding. And actually, I think, you know, the city gets sometimes five, six, seven million dollars, depending on what HUD has to divide between cities. And organizations put in applications for projects just like yours. And so that'd be something for us to find out, Marcus, whether they would be eligible for community block level grant funds.
Sure. Good point. We are, by the way, at this point, the thinking is that the CDC would be structured as a 501(c)(3).
Yeah, I see.
Thank you, Deborah.
Let me ask one. And I see that over five years, you're talking about $2 million, $250,000. Did I add that up right?
Talking about total from you all, it would be $250,000 a year times five.
Right. Would have been a million from the others, $500,000 from the others.
Yeah. Not counting as well, though, what has to come in is private sector investment as well.
How much of that is soft cost, is what I mean? You're talking about a consultant and a director?
Consultant is a front-end cost that the two foundations are absorbing. It's roughly $100,000.
That's coming out of their company.
Yeah, yeah.
And the thought, Barclay, is that the consultant would be here until the executive director is hired.
They wouldn't both be.
No.
I mean, I'm all for it. The name you mentioned and the commitment, I just, is it rocket science, what we need to do around there?
Yeah.
I mean, is it more complicated?
It's pretty complex stuff. I mean, I am amazed at how complex.
If I'm talking about it for the consultant.
Well, I would tell you, this is, yeah. We vetted this for a long time, Marcus and I, working with this consultant. And he's ready to pull back as soon as we're ready to go with our own executive director. And that's part of the budgeting. But I think, you know, he essentially would be our executive director until we hire someone.
So you're going to have one, not two. You would have a consultant and a director.
There may be some overlap early on, midway through the process, but the idea is, once you get, you hire the right executive director, and ideally someone who's experienced in this kind of work, then there's no need for a consultant. Yes. Right now, we don't, we don't know. We know what we don't know almost, more than what we do know. I speak for myself.
Okay. Thank you, Deborah.
Okay. And I thank you, and thanks for giving me, letting me preempt your closed session.
All right.
Thanks so much. Carrie Short. Thank you.
Okay. We move right into closed session. Can you read the closing?
Moving, members of council, the Senate will enclose the meeting on March 26, 2013, at 5:40 PM, for the purpose set out in Clause 1 and 7 of the Freedom of Information Act. One, discussion of one personnel matter, and seven consultations with legal counsel and briefings by staff members, consultants, or attorneys pertaining to legal issues related to the exemption of church-owned property and an investigation of plumbing contracts. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protégue?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigle?
Aye.
Dr. Wibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Your time, since you can't talk.
Should I go to the bathroom now?
Yeah. Come on. I've asked, there's been a number of correspondence regarding our general plan about discharge codes for vote. And I know all of you've got it. Frank has come up with some language that I think is going to be acceptable to the voting community and to what we want to do. And that's going to go in as an amendment, I guess, or.
You would need to make a motion from the DAS, that's a public hearing. The plan that you have a public hearing on needs to be the plan as recommended by the Planning Commission, but you can amend it at the hearing.
There's a couple of amendments that we have.
We've given you three things that we have suggested as amendments, all of which you can do at the hearing.
Okay. So can we do it before the community?
We can do it at the very beginning of the hearing, as soon as the hearing is open, yes.
And that's the lifelong learning portion, the great Norview area and the discharge.
Yes.
So I think we're going to, we want to do that. And I think there's been a lot of citizen input on all of them. That would be good. Second, the folks, folks at Fleet Park would like to get a sign for, you know, they're out of Dazalia now. There's a sign on the entrance somewhere. We're finding people to, they, little league, we ought to add Fleet Park sign to that, too, because in their logo, they're gold, Vegas blue and gold or something. So they've done a lot of improvements out there. Been a good, you know, the city and Marcus, y'all came up with a great solution to that. I think it'd be nice to help them out with that. Last thing is, there's some construction, some road construction, I don't know exactly what's. On Greenbrier Avenue, down off near where Heflin, where we put the new underpass, and it's, some of the homeowners and property owners down there are concerned. It's been a lot longer than they were told till it was going to be completed and the detour would be taken up. And we need to find out what the problem is with that, because it's negatively impacting some commercial as well as some residential property. And they've been told two weeks, for about the last eight weeks. Okay? That's all I have, Mr. Vice Mayor.
I just wanted to thank Brick. I asked him last week to get us a meeting set up with the school board. It came down hard, and he did his great to do that. I really appreciate that. And secondly, I know you don't want to hear this again, but my civic league last week and several constituents are asking us about the negotiations for Watersline. I thought in January, we kind of thought we were going to be back within the month. Do you have an update on that?
We're still in negotiations.
Will there be any thought on end point?
Getting closer and closer.
If he told you anymore, it'd have to get you.
He is killing. By a slow death. That's all.
Okay. Here's one.
I just want to say, you know, I called you about an issue with the John Lynn Guide, number one, I thanked you for the city's advertising with the John Lynn Guide. I think that's great. And then, number two, in getting the senior citizen tax relief information sessions spread out across the city, not just in two very similar locations. So I appreciate that. I'm just waiting to hear what the new locations will be.
I can thank Mr. Riddick for advertising.
And before Marcus speaks, I know Marcus is going to make an announcement today, but before he speaks, I had sent out a, I'm going to hand it now in preface of Marcus talking. I had, on October 25, 2011, I had sent out an information access interdepartment correspondence to the manager's office. I don't know where we are on it, but in that particular document, I expressed the fact that information should be free-flowing and timely, regardless of political consequence. Also, at that time, I said, information withheld or produced untimely continually engenders a climate of distrust. And that was in that memo back then. I'm going to just ask you, if you want to take it, pass it around, just to remind yourselves. And then the ultimate request was, is our ability to quickly, you know, deal with the press and be able to give the press information, and then ultimately passing it on to the citizens, or even live-streaming ourselves without the press. And this was a year and a half ago, at a time that we had other issues come up. I don't know if we, we never, we never looked at this closely. I'm going to ask the manager's office to reexamine this memo, reexamine what my request is. Excuse me if you could, the extras, Marcus. And just keep one for yourself. Reexamine what the request was, because I think we would not find ourselves in a position that, for unfortunate circumstances and timing, we're in. So with that, that's all I have.
Mr. Manager?
Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council, I want to talk a little bit about the AT ZOBI, a mechanical issue that has surfaced over the course of last week. I think it's very important to just start off by saying that we have been working with the federal authorities for about a year. And during that process, it was very clear from the federal authorities that they did not want us to divulge any information related to this investigation. I will tell you this, that irrespective of what is the final determination of the findings from this federal investigation, I think it's very important that we, as a city, take a couple of very important steps. One is that earlier today, I reached out to the state police and asked them to conduct an investigation as it relates to this matter. So in other words, while I did speak to our common attorney, as well as the police chief, Goldsmith, and Chief Goldsmith and his team is very capable of doing this investigation, I thought that it would be better to have an arms-length distance with this. So we've reached out to the state police, and they will, they have agreed to do an investigation as it relates to any employee that is involved in any wrongdoing related to this matter. I think what's also extremely important is that there is this particular issue, but there's also internal controls. So I start off by basically saying that if there are a few people that are associated with wrongdoing, I would hope that the council and the community understands that we have about 5,000 employees that come to work every day, and they give it all they have. And they are extremely talented, and they really work hard for the city. So I would hope that whatever comes out of this investigation does not cloud that or tarnish the great employees that work with us. I will tell you that I've worked with the city attorney, I've worked with the city auditor, I've worked with the finance director, as well as my assistant city manager over finance and administration. And what we're going to do, or we're already in the process of doing, is reviewing all of our internal controls. There are really six areas. One is that, as I mentioned earlier, we are reviewing internal controls and all of the levels of approval, every individual who can approve a transaction. We also are having a review currently, but we will also have periodic reviews of all our master agreements in terms of their consistency, their terms, and their limits. We're also reviewing the length of contracts, as well as, we want to make sure that we have the right people in the right position as it comes to procurement, that they're qualified and they have the proper training. We're reviewing, updating all of our procedures, our policy manuals as they relate to procurement. And I think, most importantly, we're making sure that the proper training is already in place. So again, I think the most important thing is, we can have a series of controls, we can always attempt to be better at what we do. I do stand by what we did during this process in terms of being very collaborative with the federal government, as well as providing all the documentation that they asked, as well as staying in line with their request that we do not divulge information. At this point, again, as it relates to the city, I find it very important to make sure that we get to the bottom of anything that's related to criminal activity or misbehavior as it relates to the employees. But more importantly, we're going to make sure that we have all the controls in place to make sure that we're working efficiently and effectively. So that is the update I'd like to provide to the council.
Is ZOBI still being used?
At this point, we are, we have taken the particular, I'm sorry, the councilman asked, is ZOBI still being used. Friday, what we did is, we cut off that usage in the system. It didn't make its way all the way through the entire organization, but we have done that over the course of the last couple of days. But it's not our intent to further use that contract. I'm sorry, that price, that agreement, that master agreement.
Do you expect, when do you expect the state police to enter to the?
Oh, yeah, that's a, that's a good point. I guess, much like Watersline, I don't want to put a timeline on it, but what we are doing.
I hope it's not as long as that.
I don't want to put a timeline on it, but I will tell you that I spoke to Colonel Clarity personally today, and as well as speaking with, working with the police chief. I think it's important also that we're not just going to relegate that to the state police. There are things that we can do as an administration. It's also making sure that these personnel issues are addressed also.
Well, I think that your choice of the state police to backstop the FBI is significant. Because, at this point, because the FBI still has an open investigation, we don't know where this matter may go with them, whether or not those individuals would ultimately be charged by indictment or information themselves. If the FBI elects not to charge them at some point, then your choice of the state police to backstop their investigation allows two investigative arms to talk to one another, and then decisions can be made at that point at the Commonwealth Attorney's Office, once the state police produces a report for them. So your request to bring them in is, is very prudent at this point, and I think you've done a fine job with respect to that.
And as it relates to internal controls.
Yes.
And auditing, I think that that is also the proper approach, and we can learn from this. We can also look at other departments to make sure that, again, we have the proper internal controls in place and that we have ongoing spec audits, if you will.
Sure.
To be able to, again, just kind of keep an eye on things in and around all of our departments. Thank you.
Well, I appreciate that, Mr. Vice Mayor and council. And if we're back to the agenda.
We're back to the agenda.
We have Councilman Reddick, I believe, about a month ago, you asked about the, our billing, and we have Kristen Lentz here today to broaden up.
Good evening. My presentation this evening is intended to provide you all with an overview of the charges and services that are contained on the monthly HRUBS bill that Norfolk residents and businesses receive. And the HRUBS bill, HRUBS actually stands for Hampton Roads Utility Billing Service. And it's the billing system that Hampton Road Sanitation District uses to bill monthly for their wastewater treatment service. The HRUBS bill that's received by Norfolk's residents and businesses contains more than just HRSD's charge for wastewater treatment. It also contains several city charges, including water, wastewater, refuse disposal, and stormwater. And placing all of these charges on the HRUBS bill is a simpler and more convenient way for our residents to be billed. Other localities have to obtain revenue for these services as well, and there are different ways that they can do that. Some other options are having a separate public service bill from the HRUBS bill that would be sent out by the city. Another option is to bill with a separate charge on the real estate tax bill. Or a locality may choose not to have a separate charge at all and just fund the service through the real estate tax rate. And this rather busy slide shows how Norfolk bills for our public services compared to other localities. And if you look at the bottom row at the billing frequency, you see that Norfolk is the only locality that bills monthly. The other localities bill every other month. And billing monthly allows our residents to be able to plan and budget more easily, and it's my understanding that some of the other cities are looking to go, going to monthly billing. You can also see from the chart that Norfolk is the only locality that has all of its services on the HRUBS bill. The other localities have some of them on separate public service bills or included as a separate item on the real estate tax bill. And this presentation is going to cover each one of those services that Norfolk has on our HRUBS bill. Our water charge is covering the service of where we provide drinking water to our residents and businesses 24/7, 365. And we bill for that service based on the volume of water used in terms of CCF, or 100 cubic feet. And 100 cubic feet equals 748 gallons, and our charge is $4.15 per CCF. Applied to our water charge is a Norfolk's water tax, which generates about $5 million annually for the general fund, not the water fund. And residents with 5/8 inch meter, which is typical residential size meter, pay a water tax of 25% of the monthly water charge with a cap of $5.62 a month. And all other customers pay 25% of the first $75 of the monthly water charge and 15% of the remaining charge with no cap. The HRUBS bill also includes a charge for wastewater collection, which is the service wherein 130 pump stations and more than 800 miles of pipelines convey the wastewater from Norfolk's homes and businesses to Hampton Road Sanitation District for treatment. And that charge is also based on the water usage, and it's $3.39 per CCF. And I think it's important to note that, unlike the other cities, Norfolk has no minimum charge for our water or wastewater collection services. And that's important because it provides our customers with maximum control over their bill. Each public service bill or HRUBS bill that Norfolk residents receive has on it a dollar service charge, and that dollar service charge partially offsets our costs for meter reading, the billing process, remittance processing, and our collection activities. And when you look at Norfolk's water and wastewater collection charges compared to the other localities in the area, you can see that we're right in the middle and even a little on the low side. Our refuse disposal charge covers our weekly curbside pickup of solid waste and every other recycling collection. And the typical, or each residence pays for a month, a little bit under $27. When you compare our refuse disposal charges, it's really important to note that we're not exactly comparing apples here, because if you look at Chesapeake on the left, they don't have a separate charge for refuse disposal at all. They include that in their tax rate. And the other localities, well, Virginia Beach just started charging separately for refuse disposal, and that $10 doesn't even nearly cover their costs. And the other localities each cover varying amounts of their costs with that fee. Norfolk's stormwater charge covers all the infrastructure that provides our stormwater drainage, our flood control, and our street sweeping services. And that charge is based on equivalent residential unit of impervious area for our non-residential properties. And there's a daily rate assessed for residential properties that works out to a little bit less than $10 a month for each residence. And when you look at our stormwater charges compared to those of the other localities, once again, you have to be mindful that it may not be covering the exact same services. For example, another locality may not include street sweeping in their stormwater. It just varies. And of course, every HRUBS bill includes Hampton Road Sanitation District's wastewater treatment charge. And that charge is the same for all Hampton Roads localities, and it's also based on water consumption. But it has a minimum monthly charge of $7.50. I really like this pie chart. It shows what would make up the public service bill for a typical residential customer in Norfolk. The typical residential customer in Norfolk uses six CCF of water. And you can see that what some people call the water bill, actually, water's only less than 25% of the bill. When you compare our total public service charges to those of neighboring localities, and that's all of the charges that we listed on the previous billing page, you'll see that Norfolk's right in the middle. We actually get a great deal on billing. We pay Hampton Road Sanitation District about $360,000 a year for mailing and also remittance processing for $850,000 bills a year. They also put out some door tags for us for delinquent accounts and do some water connections and disconnections for us. If the city were to perform that same service ourselves, or we were to hire another company to do that service, we would have to pay more than $800,000 for it. As recap, or in summary, Norfolk bills in a very cost-effective manner that's easier for our residents and businesses to manage, because we bill monthly, and we include all of the services on one bill. And if there's any questions I can answer, I'd be glad to try. Yes, ma'am.
You said that the bill, go back one slide.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so our current, what we currently pay is $360,000. But if we use that, if we use the private company, or we did it ourselves for $800,000, is this by contract? Is this because we pay into this with other localities based on what they use and what we use? How is our, how is it so much different?
Norfolk used to bill every other month, like all the other localities. And when we did that, Hampton Road Sanitation District said, "We'll bill for free for you, because we have to send out a bill anyway." And you give us your meter readings, which is what we bill based on, so it's a good deal. When Norfolk said, "We want to bill monthly," HRSD said, "Well, we're not going to do that free for you. So you have to pay for the other six months." So basically, we're only paying for six months' worth of bills, and we're getting six months free.
But the $800,000, doesn't it include employees, salaries, and benefits? If we were doing it ourselves, would it, you know, the $800,000, wouldn't that include the employees that we use doing it? Salaries, benefits, and all of that?
It would include those few employees who were involved in billing, yes.
Right. Yeah, I requested this, because I get so many calls about the water bill. And I've always had questions about it. Now, we bill, I mean, 12 times a year?
We bill 12 times a year. However, there are certain customers who could get 13 bills a year, because our, the bill is based on meter reading, and our meeting, meter reading contract says they have to read meters within a range of 28 to 32 days. And if a customer were to get all of their readings occurring 28 days apart, they could theoretically get 13 bills, and I know that has happened for some folks.
And that's my question about the dollar that we charge. You know, I've always contended that that, that the city is, and it might seem something, you know, minuscule, but that extra dollar that, that customer's paying, it adds up. Oh, stormwater, stormwater, did the federal government ever give us any mandates? They started saying in the nineties that you have to start charging for stormwater, but it never gave us any mandates or any, you know, instructions of what to do.
I think they didn't give us a mandate to charge for stormwater. I think we got the authority to charge for stormwater. And there are requirements for stormwater permits that did not exist in the past that affect water quality, et cetera. So there are mandated services or activities that the city has to engage in, and we have the authority to charge a stormwater fee for those.
But the actual homeowner that's paying, you know, stormwater, they're not getting permits, are they?
No, but the city gets permits on their behalf.
What type of permits?
I think it's called an MS4 permit. There are permits that we have to do through the department, both state and federal permits.
I notice now that Hampton, that the Hampton Road Sanitation, their bills are going to Charlotte, North Carolina. Did they hire a company to do that for them?
They did, and it, a cost savings.
And, let's see, zero charge. And we had a presentation at the Southside Task Force from Hampton Road Sanitation District this month about wastewater collection. And it was a, you know, pretty interesting presentation. And my thought before that presentation was wastewater collection versus wastewater treatment. Okay, now that's, you know, we do, it's according to this bill, we have here, it's like $24.90 for wastewater collection. And, you know, I know you gave us a certain number of, you know, the routes of the, you know, lines.
130 pump stations and more than 800 miles of pipe, yes.
And is there any, is there, well, you already admitted that it was a $5 million, you know, fee that, that the city makes, but is there any, in any of these services, are there any really surplus over and above the actual costs?
Well, there's administrative overhead, but I believe there are actual costs. The finance department supports us, the IT department supports us, et cetera, and we pay those, we pay for those allocations.
I don't know. I think you'll find, I don't know how many members of council get these calls from citizens about the water bill, but I get them all the time. And, you know, I just believe that there are some things that we can do to reduce the water bill that we have to the, to the citizens.
Are they calling because they're concerned about the timing of the bill or the price of the bill?
Price of, you know, water is, water is the most reasonable, as, you know, Kristen mentioned, the most reasonable fee up here is water. But when you add on the service charge, all those service charges, a dollar still a dollar, the stormwater fee, refuse disposal, you know, that, that's a, that's a pretty good hit, too. And a lot of, I just believe that some of these charges can be reduced. And although Ms. Lentz has just sort of given us a substantiation of the charges, I still believe that they can be reduced.
Sometimes, what I've found is that it's, you know, people have old toilets, they have old plumbing, things of that nature. Won't you all go out if a citizen requests that you come out because they think that their bill is too high and do a, some kind of testing on whether they have extra running water and, you know, things like that? Yeah, waste, I know, because old toilets will run and, and things like that. Will you, don't you guys do something like that?
We have dye tablets that we give to folks to put in the back of their commode, and if they see the color in the bowl, then they know their toilet's leaking, and they need to fix, replace their flapper valve, which is actually a very inexpensive thing to do, but can save you a lot of money. We also are happy, we have a leak detection team, and they will be happy to go out and work with you where you turn off all the water in your house, and then they'll stand there with you and look at your meter and see if it's still turning, and those sorts of things.
Okay. Thank you, Kristen.
All right, we, discussion has raised to first nap, because we're going to take up that discussion on the night, and they're going to come in on the 23rd, so we can talk a little bit about the plan off of 2030.
Mr. Vice Mayor, we did not prepare a presentation for you tonight because we have prepared the material with you on several other occasions.
Right.
But we did want to have the opportunity to see if you had questions. And I think the big issue that people have been asking me about dealt with the three documents that we gave you at the beginning of your meeting this evening. That does include the lifelong learning chapter that Dr. Whitley had asked us to look at. We presented that to you a week ago. We've now made all the other revisions throughout the ordinance, throughout the plan, I should say, that I indicated to you we didn't have made last week. Those have now been made, so that could be added to the plan at the public hearing tonight. We also made revisions. I indicated to you that we were working with Ms. Odell and Mr. Williams on trying to come up with language dealing with Norview. That language you now have is three additional policies for the Greater Norview Plan. Could also be added this evening from the DAAS as an amendment to the plan recommended by the Planning Commission. And then you've received a number of letters dealing with, from marina operators and boat owners asking for clarification on the no discharge zone policy that was in the plan. What we're recommending is that that language be modified, which I think is, the modification, I think, is more consistent with what the Planning Commission was looking for. And that's why we continue to work with the affected community to explore that designation. And we wouldn't be looking to just rush out and do that designation. we wouldn't be looking to just rush out and do that designation tomorrow. So all three of those could be added from the DAS this evening as amendments to the plan. And if you have other questions, we'll be happy to see what can be answered.
Could we do an amendment as you proposed for Yarmouth Street?
You could do an amendment to the land use designation for Yarmouth Street from the DAS this evening. The Neighborhood League had asked that that designation be changed from mixed residential to single-family. I would not recommend it go to the urban, or the residential urban or single-family urban, which is what the plan would describe it as. The majority of the homes on Yarmouth Street are townhomes, so if you wanted to change that designation to reflect the character of the street, you'd want to change it to multifamily corridor. You can do that this evening.
Unless anybody has any opposition. The concern with Yarmouth is right now, even though the buildings are connected, those homes are connected, they are not condominiums, they're like a townhouse, but within the eventuality that there was a fire, that we would like it to be rebuilt as it looks now and not as mixed, I mean, as multifamily.
With the Norview changes, was there any discussion about specifically mentioning Alexander Street and maybe reducing density on that street?
We, well, that's, that's ongoing. We've already downzoned in there, so that's, we didn't have to, that's already done.
Okay.
And I think if you look at it, and I think Point 11D discusses commercial redevelopment five points through land assembly and acquisition.
Yeah, I was just, but Alexander's off of the commercial corridor part of it. It's in the interior. It's zone residential.
The backside of those apartments, strout right on Main Thoroughfare, so.
But we continue to do that, and we're not prohibited from doing that.
Right. I just don't know if you wanted to specifically mention it, because I know it's a priority for that area.
Right, but it's, it's, I don't know if it speaks, but it's already...
We are dealing with that issue in Alexander Street. We had some discussions about should we add that, and we came to a conclusion exactly as the vice mayor suggested. Based on what we're already doing, we didn't feel we needed to add another policy to deal with that issue.
And I'm afraid I, I'm not sure what the change is for the plan for Yarmouth. Do you mind restating that, so?
It would be to change the land use designation from, that's, single-family urban, is that what is current, no, single-family mixed, sorry, mixed residential is what it is now, and it would be to change it to multifamily corridor.
Thank you. And Frank, thank you very much for doing this lifelong learning. I know that was a big challenge.
Well, again, I need to give the credit to, I have a great staff, and I need to give them the credit.
Thanks to the planning staff.
And I also, you're going to have a number of members from the Planning Commission that are there this evening, and I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge all the members of the Planning Commission who worked very diligently going through every word of this plan, every map, and I'm certain, as part of your asks, that they go through and look at it, street by street, block by block, they did on the land use map. And I'd be remiss if I did not acknowledge the multiple years of dedication the Planning Commission members put in.
Thanks, Frank.
So we're just about ready to do this again? When did we start on 24?
It'll be a forest lawn when they do it again.
I thought maybe we'd better get a jumpstart.
We're trying to get a jumpstart now on updating the zoning ordinance, which is one of the actions that's called for, and my staff are already telling me they think I'm crazy because I'm pushing forward to clean that.
We've got one more item, East Beach Harbor District.
The East Beach Harbor District, it is a, some revisions to the language for East Beach Harbor in the zoning ordinance, and here I'd be remiss if I didn't at the very Thank Bernard, Ms. Pishko, for the support from the city attorney's office, Adam Alita, he hung in there with us very well on that one, so Bernard, thank you very much for your support, and George Homewood from my office took the lead on this particular effort. What this does, we recognized a year ago that the language in the East Beach Harbor District didn't work. It had multiple problems in it. And so Mr. Smigle and Mr. Wynn asked us to come in and look at that, to look at updating it. We worked with the community here. We have updated the list of uses. We have updated the processes. We have really cleaned this ordinance up in a way that will work. We worked with residents of East Beach, with the East Ocean Youth Civic League, as well as all of the property owners in the East Beach Harbor District. And what we arrived at is, I think, as one of the residents said, it's not perfect. No one is completely happy, and that's probably a good sign that we did the right thing, because everyone got some of what they wanted. There was one vote against this at Planning Commission, and that one vote came from Council member, or Commission Member Martin Thomas, who was concerned that we are walking away from the Little Annapolis Plan. The reason we're doing that is the more we worked through that, working with Adam, it just became obvious that that plan did not work as a zoning district. So we have tried to keep what we could of that plan. We think this is a good project that better reflects the needs of the property owners as well as the desires of the community.
Okay.
Here again, thanks to the, to Mr. Frank and his staff, because...
That's for sure.
As far as I know, it's really only one person, maybe, that's, now, is pretty upset, but everybody else, we came a long way from two sides of it.
When we started this, we had the two sides who wouldn't talk to one another, and at the end, everyone was good except for one man.
So is this, is this the, the pockets will be developed?
Yes, sir. This is the area of Pretty Lake on the east side of Shore Drive on the south side. These are, these are old marinas and waterfront industrial sites that the desire has been to allow them to develop as uses more compatible with the East Beach development.
And so the big controversy has been settled, they're going to be allowed to develop them, or what?
The big controversy was the intensity that was, that you could do under the old regulations that were far more intense than people had envisioned, and we have, working with the city attorney's office and the residents, we have toned that down, so you would end up with a development that would be far more compatible with what's in East Beach in terms of intensity of use.
What about the developer, they were developers...
Mr. Adams' project is not affected by this?
So that's not, that's not...
He had two, he had two projects proposed.
Right.
The one that started all this is no longer on the books. The one that we've discussed before is still happening as far as we know. That, that one is not impacted by it. It's still allowed. The other one is the one that caused the discussion because of the proposed density that was being allowed under the old language.
But it's not...
That one is gone. The other one was far enough along through the process that he was determined to be vested for that project.
Okay, thank you, Frank. Okay, we can get upstairs and start all time.